I like to call our annual Christmas meeting. This is usually the, well, this is the most fun meeting that we have every, every year, which it's always light and jolly and, you know, we give out awards and it's just always a really nice meeting and hint, hint, it's usually a short one. So, and I realized today that this is actually my 25th Christmas meeting. As a councilman or mayor, my, my 25th brightest beacon of the wards as well. So in honor of that, I'm gonna put this thing on. And I'm gonna begin with the presentation of the Barbara Jo Finch brightest beacon on the Bay Awards. I'm going to hand the microphone over to Holly, but I do want to ask the, the families that are on the call, you know, when your name is announced, unmute yourself and just say hi so we know you're there. We can, you know, we can, you know, you know, do all of that. So I'll, Holly, it's all yours, the Barbara Jo Finch brightest beacon on the Bay.
Thank you. So the brightest beacon on the Bay Awards for 2020. We actually had 16 submissions this year and over 3,000 votes. We did online voting. We had over 3,000 actual votes cast through that. And, and the result is we have one bright town. So thank you so much for participating. The community spirit award for this year is Hart Lane, home is where the heart is. They received 322 votes. So each family on Hart Lane will receive four season passes to the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, $100 Roland's gift card, $100 Sneed's gift card, and a $25 gift card to 1936.
Wow. Anybody from Hart Lane on the call?
Well.
Where is Hart Lane?
I applaud them.
Hart Lane is in Bayview Hills.
Okay, well, I applaud them.
Okay, our most festive boat is a boat named hers. It's in Marina West Slipknot. They're receiving a prize of a $50 Tyler's Taco Shop and a $50 gift card to 1936.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, I know who this is.
It's a new boat this year, but yes, thank you.
Yeah, you win every year.
Um, we usually win with the other boat, yes. But we got a new boat this year, so we did his and hers and apparently I won.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for participating.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the brightest beacon, third place award is 3812 19th Street, receiving 114 votes. And this, this home is receiving a $50 Roland's gift card and a $50.
Spectacular.
Okay, brightest beacon, second place award is the gingerbread house at 8204 Hart Lane, receiving 739 votes. Their prize is four season, four passes to the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, $50 Trader's gift card and a $50 gift card to Mama Lucia's.
Spectacular.
Okay, our brightest beacon on the Bay, first place award is Evan Art Filled Old Crap Fashion Christmas Home at 7007 Silver Charm Lane, receiving 747 votes. The prize for this award is a four season pass to the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, $100 Roland's gift card and a $50 gift card to Lita's.
Way to go, Steve.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, guys.
Way to go, Steve.
If I didn't mention, the, the awards will actually be mailed out to, to the owners of each of the properties. So the brightest beacon on the Bay Award goes out to the Christmas House at 6918 Danu Court, receiving 1,146 votes. This home will receive four season passes to the water park, $100 Roland's gift card, $100 Sneed's Ace gift card, and $25 gift card to 1936.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Joe and Brittany.
Good job. Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for participating.
Mayor Mahoney, the boys are bummed they can't take a picture with you this year.
Yeah, well, I owe you, I owe you and the boys a picture. That BG&E thanks you as well, by the way.
We'll hold you to that. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, there they are. All right. Thanks. You guys always win. We didn't have to name it after you pretty soon.
No, no.
We enjoy it.
We love it. It's fun.
Yeah, good seeing you again. I just saw you the other day. Thanks for those masks, by the way, Joe.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
I went home and ordered a whole bunch of them.
Awesome. Good.
Yeah, thanks.
Take care.
Yeah, did Holly?
That concludes.
Okay, just before you start again, just for posterity sake, just so everybody knows, Barbara Jo Finch, former councilwoman, many years, was the originator, founder of the, the brightest beacon on the Bay Awards. And we decided a few years ago to name this after her and her memory. And her memory will always live on in Chesapeake Beach. So I just wanted to say that before we get to the calendar. Go ahead, Holly.
Okay. Okay, so our 2021 town calendar is actually, was mailed out today. So everyone will be receiving those in your mailbox. As well as tomorrow, it's going to be delivered to several area locations in the town, such as the post office, the library, the community center, and a couple of our area restaurants. So you can, you can also grab a calendar at those locations. What we've done here, just to present the calendar, since we're not in person, is this is a compilation of each of the image pages of the calendar, just as a preview. And this will also be posted on our website later tonight, our first thing tomorrow. So I'll just run through each of the months so you can see the images.
Good job.
The calendar this year also was completed by citizen votes. So all of the submissions are from town residents submitting them to town hall. And our residents also voted for the winners. So thank you for all of your participation.
Ooh, like that doggy. Like that one.
That's Leon the dog.
The McWater kids on, on the beach.
Great. That concludes the calendar.
All right. Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you, Holly, and, and good job, everybody who participated. It was great having all these people vote. It really was. It was a good idea and something we'll continue to do moving forward. So now we will begin the, the December 17th Town Council Meeting. Let the record read that the entire council, to include the mayor, are present. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the swearing in of the mayor. For the record, I was sworn in today outside the, the Calver County Courthouse by the, the clerk of the, the circuit court at 11:00 a.m. We'd, next we are, is the swearing in of the town council. Before we get to the, the video clip, I want to take this time, because this is, is the last time I can thank the, the, the First Administration Council. I want to thank the, the town council for all they did these past four years to make Chesapeake Beach a better place. They say, you know, make it better when you lift, when you leave, you know, than it was when you came. And that, that group certainly did that. And to conclude, I really want to thank the town council for all they did to keep the citizens safe during this pandemic. I can't say enough about the responsibility that, that they had. And, and they will continue to pull through, I'm quite sure. So thank you very much. Holly, I believe you have a, something for us here?
That's the worst shirt that I am, I think.
I Charlie, I Charlie, I Charlie, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town council according to the Constitution and laws of this state. I, Eric Fabray, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully and bear truly this to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, and laws of this state.
I, Eric Morris, do swear, or affirm, as the case may be, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office, office of town council according to the Constitution and laws of this state. Congratulations, Mr. President.
I, Keith Carter, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town council according to the Constitution and laws of this state. Congratulations, Mr. President.
I, Valerie Jaworski, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear allegiance, true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town council according to the Constitution and laws of this state. Ms. Morris, first.
I, Valerie Jaworski, do swear or affirm, as the case may be, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and the laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town council according to the Constitution and the laws of this state.
Congratulations, Town Council.
Okay, very good. We bet the council all swore in. Next, swearing in of the, the town treasurer and town clerk. As it's written this way, I'll go with the, the town treasurer. Dale, do you have a copy of the oath in, in front of you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if, if you will, read it, raise your right hand. I'll, I'll do the same.
I, Dale Clark, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of treasurer according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. And Sharon, I know you have a copy. Okay, well, if you will, raise your right hand and, and read it, please.
I, Sharon Humm, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitutions and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town clerk according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you, Sharon. And Todd, do you have a copy of the oath?
Unfortunately, I don't.
Okay, then repeat after me, because I actually do. Okay. I, I, Todd Pound, do swear.
I, Todd Pounds, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill.
And that I will, to the best of my skill.
And judgment diligently and faithfully.
And judgment diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of town attorney.
Execute the office of town attorney.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got that all taken care. Okay. Now we're going to ask the council to elect a vice president. Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before I make the motion, I would just like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Bodine for four years of service as the council vice president. Thank you so much, Valerie. It would be good, I believe, to get additional vice president experience on the council, among other members, and therefore I would like to nominate Councilmember Derek Fabray as vice president.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to assume that the council is going to, is going to want to make some remarks. I'll, I'll start with the current vice president, Valerie Bodine.
Yes, I think I'll support Derek. I think he'll do a fine job.
Thank you. Charlie?
I'm not going to have a lot to add. I talked to a couple folks and I, I was surprised. But I think that Derek has some goals that I support. And I, I am not going to jump out and change gears on this nomination at this point.
Thank you. Larry?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I would like to specifically thank Valerie for serving as vice president for the last four years. And I'd like to thank Derek for taking a turn. So I would like to speak briefly, though, about, I know that all of us know that North Beach, they have a, they cycle the council through on vice president. And that's interesting to me, simply because it is kind of, it's kind of a neat thing. Serving as vice president for a year, a couple of years, or however, however, you might get a chance to preside over a meeting in the chamber, which is just really neat. But again, I'd like to thank Valerie and Derek, both of them. Thank you. Pat froze.
Lost the mayor.
Lost the mayor.
Well, hopefully he'll make it back soon. I apologize to everyone. My camera is having difficulty. You probably noticed it keeps turning off on me. Every time I turn it on, it'll turn back off. So I do apologize for that. Hopefully my, my audio is working okay.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Did you have anything to add to that, Keith?
Well, if we're gonna just keep on going down the, down the road, I would like to just echo some of the sentiments that I've heard already. I think Valerie did a great job this last four years. I really appreciate her leadership to the council. And, and with that, I will move on.
Thank you, Keith. Derek?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for nominating me and, and the kind words. I too want to thank Councilwoman Bodine. Really honored to be considered, you know, for this role following her term. She's been an excellent role model for all of us who just completed our first term. And I want to personally thank her for all the support and counsel she's given to me the last four years and, and will continue to do so, I'm sure. So I thank you, Valerie. Also, you know, I want to echo what Greg just said, as far as maybe mirroring, you know, what some of our neighbor municipalities and even the county have done. I'm certainly open to revisiting this discussion, you know, in two years. And I fully support if, you know, if we feel that we want to give someone else the experience and the opportunity to be in that role, I'm, I'm all for it. So I, I think that's a good idea and, and, you know, maybe we could revisit that again in a couple of years. But again, just thank you all and, and I do accept your nomination. Thank you.
Well, okay, thank you and, and welcome, Mr. Vice President. And if you don't, if you don't mind, I'm going to give you your first assignment, which is, I'm going in and out here on this meeting. I don't know if you all noticed it. So if you could, if I go out again, which I hope I don't, just kind of move things along for me.
Yes, we take the vote?
I'll, I'll get to that. Yes, thank you. He isn't there yet. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we have a new vice president. First assignment still stands. And, and thank you, Larry. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Okay. At this time, we ask if there's any public comment on any item on the agenda. Hearing none, I'll move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the November 19th Town Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the, the minutes of the November 19th, closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the December 7th Town Council Work Session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, next we get to a fun item. Is Doris on the call? Anybody? Okay, I'll take that for, for no. We, often I, I brag to, to people about our wonderful volunteers. And because I know their backgrounds, I, I like to say, you know, in their, in their work life, Uncle Sam paid him beaucoup dollars to, for their services as executives or whatever they did for, you know, at that time. And Doris Kamik Spencer certainly exemplifies that. So she has just recently retired after almost two decades of service on the, the Board of Appeals. And I'm going to read this, this proclamation, which the council has signed. Whereas Doris was born to Mr. and Mrs. William C. Kamik in her hometown of Washington DC on February the 27th, 1940. And whereas Doris attended American U, where she received her Master of Public Administration degree. And whereas Doris had a rewarding career with the, the federal government, beginning as a GS2 key punch operator and retiring as a GM15 Director of Office and Information Resources and Management. Whereas Doris began her service to Chesapeake Beach in 2001 as a member of the Board of Appeals, and later elected chairwoman of the board in February of 2015, serving the town for almost 20 years. And whereas Doris is a member of the Maryland Municipal League's Academy for Excellence in Local Government. And whereas Doris is currently the president, CEO of the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce, co-founder and founding president and executive board member of the Concerned Black Women of Calver County, Executive Director of Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and a member of both Southern Maryland Economic Development Association and the Southern Maryland Tri-County Workforce Investment Board. And whereas, the life of Doris J. Kamik Spencer is a true model of a committed volunteer. Therefore, be it proclaimed that on the 17th day of December 2020, the Chesapeake Beach Mayor and Town Council applaud Doris J. Kamik Spencer for her life of willingness to serve the town, for her years of willingness to serve the town and her surrounding community, providing her leadership expertise and her spiritual commitment, which is evident in everything she does. Duly signed by the mayor and town council. We'll get a copy of this over to, to Doris. So thank you. Next, Town Administrators Report. We have read the Town Administrators Report. Does the council have any, any questions of it? I'll, I'll begin with, with the new vice president and work my way around.
Questions at this time?
Keith?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Greg?
Yeah, I have one question. It's regarding the short-term rental survey. Seems like a good idea. I was wondering, I presume that went community-wide. I know most of us know that some of the HOAs in town prohibit, have their own rules about some of that stuff. I didn't know if maybe it was worthwhile noting that in the survey somewhere. I wouldn't want to unnecessarily alarm anybody, but I think it's a good idea, the survey. That's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mayor, could I just follow up on that? I, I just want to announce to the public that we are having a survey that we released that we're asking everyone to please complete. It's on our town website and we're also going to be sending postcards out to town residents' home mailboxes or PO boxes. And it's basically to get residents' feedback and thoughts on the use of short-term rentals within town. And one of the questions on the survey, Councilman Morris, is if they reside within an HOA, so that we can differentiate that in the responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Larry?
Just a comment on the green initiatives. Look forward to furthering those initiatives. It's great what we're doing so far. And as I suggested once before, I would suggest that we consider adding solar panels to the electric vehicle charging station that's going to go in there at Kellums Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
I have no questions.
And Valerie?
Yes, just to, the first is on the short-term rental survey. I went through it today and I think you're well done. And I'm really happy to hear that you're going to be using postcards to reach individuals instead of just an email box. As I said before, there are still people in our community that do not have internet and computers. So this is a big issue. It's just in that. Then what they be?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
Will the postcards be sent out?
Next week.
I think that's a great idea. And going through it, there were two questions, I think, on the HOAs. And they were kind of similar, but I, I think it was really pretty well-written. Second, this is the first year that we've noted on the photos in the town calendar and for the brightest beacon. And I'd like to encourage us to continue to do that. I think it's a wonderful idea and how to get citizen participation. So I'd like us to see us continue that, those next year, both for the calendar and for the brightest beacon. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works Administrators Report. We read Jay's report. Do we have any questions of Jay?
Question?
Okay. Shoot.
Truly, just a comment. I know it's a little early, I guess. There's a lot of pent-up energy with youth and folks through town, Jay. And I'm just looking forward to having a healthy 2021 there at Kellums Field for all the sporting teams that are going to use it and the individuals. And I certainly would like to, this is the first whole season, I think, that maybe the town has owned all of that property there. And I certainly would like to underline quality with the maintenance of the grounds there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments for the, the Public Works? Jay? If not, I'm going to go. If not, I'm going to go ahead and go back a bit before we go to the treatment plant. I understand that Doris is on the call? Are you on the call, Doris?
Sorry, she's muted. Let me.
I see her. But she's on mute.
Is there anywhere we can unmute Doris?
There she is. She's off mute now. Hi, Doris.
Hey, Doris.
Hi.
How are you, Doris? Okay, can you hear me, Doris?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, well, welcome. We just read the the proclamation, and I'm going to read it again, okay? If you don't mind, I I kind of did a little bragging about you before it started, how you you volunteered your services, you know, to our town for two decades after after charging Uncle Sam an arm and a leg for three decades. So we really feel lucky that you that you did that. So thank you very much. So I'm going to read the proclamation again that the that the council did sign. Whereas Doris was born to Mr. And Mrs. William C. Kamik Senior in her hometown of Washington DC on February the 27, 1940. And whereas Doris attended American U, where she received her Masters of Public Administration degree. And whereas Doris had a rewarding career with the federal government, beginning as a GS2 key punch operator and retiring as a GM15 Director Office of Information Resources Management. And where Doris began her service to Chesapeake Beach in 2001 as a member of the Board of Appeals and later elected Chairwoman to to the Board in February of 2015, serving the town for almost 20 years. Whereas Doris is a member of the Maryland Municipal League Academy for Excellence in Local Government. And where Doris is currently the President and CEO of the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce, co-founder and founding president and executive board member of the Concerned Black Women of Calver County, Executive Director of Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and a member of both the Southern Maryland Economic Development Association and Southern Maryland Tri-County Workforce Investment Board. And whereas the life of Doris J. Kamik Spencer is a true model of a committed volunteer. Now therefore, let it proclaim, be proclaimed that on the 17th day of December 2020, the Chesapeake Beach Mayor and Town Council applaud Doris J. Kamik Spencer for her years of willingness to serve the town and her surrounding community, providing her leadership, expertise, and her spirit of commitment, which is evident in everything she does. Signed by the Mayor and Town Council of Chesapeake Beach. So Doris, we applaud you for your volunteer service to this town.
Thank you. Thank you.
And and I, but before I give the council a chance to remark, I wanted to give you the floor if you just wanted to say a few words to us.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I am one who believes, of course, in supporting community. And I definitely wanted to support where I live, in Chesapeake Beach. Again, it has been quite a learning experience. Every meeting, I had the opportunity to learn something different. I wish the I'm trying to think of what I'm trying to say, because I am truly, truly affected by this. It's much appreciated. And I guess all I want to say is thank you for the proclamation. And I truly appreciated doing, you know, what had to be done, working with so many wonderful people. And wish you all well. It is time for me to slow down, though, and and enjoy all that I've been given. And it wasn't an easy decision for me, but it was time.
Well, we certainly thank you for your time, Doris. And if you'll stick around a bit, I have a few things I want to say, and I'm sure the council wants to to follow me. And I'll begin. What, to to be the chairperson of the Board of Appeals, it really takes a special talent when you live in a small town, because there's certain things that that have to get done to enhance the town as a whole. And, you know, especially when you look at the older part of town, where, you know, the, you know, the boundaries aren't really all that great. And and, you know, the streets are up close to the curbs, and you've got people with with growing families who want to stay in town, and maybe they want to expand their house a wee bit. And and they have to work with the Board of Appeals to get this sort of stuff done. I know there were other instances where the American Legion and the the Volunteer Fire Department, you know, came before the the Board. And and it it takes a true talent to to know how to stretch the rubber band of the Chairwoman and to get what needs to be done, which that makes this a better town. And I was able to witness Doris do this numerous times. And it was not only a talent that she saw what had to get done, but that she led her board to get what had to get done. And it was all done quietly, and this was all done over 20 years. And I never said anything public about all the good that she did. And here I am now, just telling you that I witnessed firsthand that there was a lot of good that came to this town because of the foresight and wisdom of Doris Spencer. So I want to personally thank you for that on behalf of all the citizens who you've helped these these two decades. So having said that, I'm going to begin with one of your, one of your former colleagues, Vice President Fabre, and we'll see if anybody has any comments. So I'll leave it to you, Derek.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I had met Dr. Spencer previously, I really got to know her about six years ago when I did join the Board of Appeals. And she welcomed me in very quickly, not only becoming a friend, but really a mentor. And I really enjoyed the time with her. I actually wish I had more. I was only on for about two years, but we, you know, we got pretty close because we had some interesting interesting cases to look at together, and I really enjoyed that. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Spencer, for your leadership, not only, you know, to the Board when I was on there, but everything else you've done as well. You're truly inspiring.
Thanks, Derek. I enjoyed working with you, too.
Thank you. I'll miss you. All right, it looks like Pat is frozen. So Keith?
All right. Thank you, Derek. And and more importantly, thank you, Dr. Spencer, for your service to the town. Your record of volunteerism is impressive and inspiring. So again, I want to send my well wishes and again, appreciation for everything you've done for the town. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Keith.
Greg?
Ms. Spencer, Dr. Spencer, I've never met you, Doris. We may have passed in Rollins, I'm sure. I did watch a recording of one of the recent appeals meetings, and you had presided over that. And I was really impressed. The mayor has observed that over 20 years, but just the one meeting that I watched, I was just so impressed the way you presided over that meeting. Kept things in order. It was such a good job. Thank you for your dedication and your expertise, and I'm sure the town's going to miss that. But thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Larry?
Thanks, Greg.
Just wanted to thank you, Dr. Spencer, for your decades of service. You are truly an inspiration to all of us. And I hope your service to this town inspires others to step up in the years coming to help keep continuing to advance our town. Congratulations and best wishes to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
And Charlie? Mr. Frank?
Charlie, you're on mute.
That's the, that's the phrase of 2020. Dr. Spencer, I do believe we had the opportunity to meet one of the volunteer parties, if I remember correctly. There were a glass of wine or two exchanged, and it was a real pleasure to meet you and frankly inspirational, as everyone has said. You encouraged both my wife and me to get more involved in the town, and we both took that to heart. So thank you for your service and your inspiration. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
And lastly, Valerie?
Yes, let's just say the town is blessed to have you, simply blessed. You are wonderful, and you are appreciated. Thank you for all that you have done. It is wonderful to know you. God bless you.
Thanks, Valerie.
And Doris, have a Merry Christmas, please.
Same to each and every one of you. I love this town, and thank you for all that you do to to take care of it and keep it growing. Again, I appreciate the opportunity of being able to serve service to community again, like you all, because of you there is why I was where I was for so long, because we care. I only wish that we could get more of our, you know, residents to volunteer like you do. It takes people such as yourself and certainly as as me to do what we do so that this town can continue to to be the town that it it has become and is becoming. Thank you, Pat. I've enjoyed working with you. And in fact, because of you, stayed longer than I had even planned to. But I respect you, and I really want to say thank you to everyone. I enjoyed it.
Thank you, Doris. Appreciate it. Well, just give another round here. All right. If we were live, Doris, I would bail out for she's a jolly good fellow, but I'm not sure it's going to come out the same over the So I owe you one of them, okay?
Okay.
All right, very good. You have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, okay, next, the the water reclamation treatment plant report. We've, we've seen John's report. Do we have any questions for John?
I have a question.
Shoot, Larry.
Comment is, congrats to John and the staff on another year without any spills. Job well done, particularly given the strange, weird weather patterns that we've had this past year. Exceptionally well done, John. Congratulations and to your staff as well. And a question that you don't need to answer right now, but maybe next month we can get an update. A while ago, there was discussion about the need to cover the filters, and I'm just curious whether there's any update on that project going ahead. You're on mute, John. John, you're on mute. There you go.
All right.
All right. Yeah, well, thank you for that, Larry. We are looking into RFP in the process, and we should have that by by next year, 2021.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of John?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Valerie.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your two new places starting November 30. And on this, you'll notice where it says, if you see it on the screen, there were no PO costs over 5,000, no. Down just a little bit where it says there were no PO costs over 5,000, but not over the threshold limit of 10. You just want to change that wording. It's just not, doesn't work.
I know. I did look at that, in fact, for this meeting. I will change that.
No worries. It's just, it reads a little funny.
Right.
That's all.
Reinforcement report. We've read Connie's report. Do we have any questions of Connie?
Question?
Shoot.
Connie, in the section on the opens, as I was flipping through here, I'm noticing there are, gosh, several, I'll say, cases that appeared to have been opened. I'm looking at ones back in May of 18, October of 18, that are still open. I'm wondering if there's anything that the town can do to help you on getting these results.
You're probably seeing ones, Larry, that are in foreclosure, and I keep an eye on them all the time. And that's the way for the community and for me to remember that there's probably no one there. They could be vandalized, that sort of thing. It's just a way to keep them on my radar.
I see. Very good. Thank you. Nothing further.
Any other questions of Connie? Hearing none, we'll move forward. The the Town Treasurer's Report. We've read Dale's report. Do we have any questions for Dale?
I do have a question.
Okay. Start with Valerie. Go ahead. Did you have a question, Valerie?
I just need to thank Dale and the staff for the water park work session that we had. I thought it was really well-done, explaining the financial situation with the water park well.
Thank you. Larry?
Sorry. Dale, could you, as an engineer, I don't understand this finance stuff very well. Can you just explain the fund balance policy and capitalization policy? I don't quite understand what they're intended to serve. And then I have one further question.
Okay, sure. Larry, the both policies is just a formalized, basically formalized in our process, if you will. So the fund balance is basically having a process that defines our different fund balances. And, you know, explain if they're restricted or unrestricted, and specifically what those funds can be used for. When audit came in, they provided these recommendations. They said it's something we could do if we were interested. And I think it would be helpful to have because some other municipalities do have it. The capitalization is basically, we always capitalize our assets that are 5,000 or greater. And basically, it's just defined in what type of assets get capitalized, and it's just defined in the process.
Okay, very good. And then I just wanted to comment, under the key financial metrics, pointing out specifically that for this past year, we saw a 7% increase, or nearly a 7% increase in the net position of the town. And given the uncertainties of this past year, I think that's truly remarkable. And along with that was a reduction in the town debt. So again, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Charlie?
Yeah, I had a couple of things, general questions. We used a new audit company this year. Can you tell me just really quickly why? Yeah, we, Charlie, we had a four-year contract that ended with the previous auditors, BTCPA. There are new auditors that we chose, and we have a four-year contract with them. This was our first year. I can tell you personally, I thought it was great working with them, and I'm really looking forward to working with them in the next three years.
It's just a general good policy to rotate your auditors every once in a while, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's why I was going to echo that. And then in the net position, you talk about debt, in the second bullet, you talk about debt reduction. And you say we, you did not include in the debt obligation, the payoff, the $1.3 million payoff for the 2010 bond. But I assume that that, that those funds are not included in the net position of the town. So that's not coming out of that net. Correct. And that was paid off on 7/1, correct. Yeah, okay. Okay. No, this looks great. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions of Dale from the council? Hearing none, thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
County Engineers Report. We've read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions of Wayne?
Yes.
I do.
I'll, I'll start with Derek.
All right, Wayne, good to see you. I'm going to ask you about the 261 sidewalk. Could you provide an update on that, if you have one?
Sure, I will. We have worked with BAI to define what their
Sure, I will. We have worked with BAI to define what their needs are for addressing the SHA requirements. We're also right now working with SHA to confirm that we do not need to address those requirements. The, in essence, SHA came back and agreed with what we have proposed and came back and said, I don't think there's additional plan revisions required. Brittany, who is our SHA contact there, is confirming that and should get back to me hopefully the next week or so.
And so, the next steps after that would be?
We will have completed 30% design and we can move on to, to construction documents.
And for the construction documents, do we need to, does the state need to grant additional, or the second phase of the grant to do that? Or, I mean, what's the process for that second phase?
I could probably answer that. That, that's correct. We would have to reach another MOU with the state for the split of covering the cost for the, to get to construction drawings.
And, and do we have any concerns that that's going to be held up or, or even rejected?
No, I do not.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I think I heard somebody else has a question for, for Wayne.
Yeah, I do. I'd like to just follow on Councilman, Vice President, Bobbery had his comments there. So, through this chapter, this sidewalk here, State Highway requested some things that they didn't really need. And we had to tell them that they didn't really need it. And so, now we're progressing. So, State Highways kind of delayed the project about six months there, it sounds like. Just a comment, you don't need to answer that. I do have a question for you, though. Regarding the heritage. And it's also a question for the attorney. Are there any properties that need to be turned over to the HOA in the heritage?
That would be a question for, for the attorney or actually for me. I don't know. I haven't even looked at that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's looking ahead a little bit, but as we know, town needs to make sure that we have that stuff sorted out. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Any more questions to Wayne?
Uh, yes, I have some.
Yes.
First of all, I should pre-dredge. I just wanted to reiterate my interest in reengineering the jetty's or the potential thereof. And so, whenever we, we talk with the state, it's something that we should keep in mind. Just that potential so that we can not have to dredge quite so often if we can come up with a better resolution.
Understood. I expect to be following up with them in the, in the first month of, of the new year and we'll see where they're at.
That would be awesome. I, I think a short-term solution is just raising the height of the jetty since they currently exist. Maybe to actually reengineer them, in parallel, creating a better waterfall. Also, I had a question on the Richfield Station one. Where in the second part, it says full house pump projects. That's not a new pump station, is it?
It is not. They are individual home pumps for each, each house.
Yeah, I just didn't think we were getting another wet wall there and it's good to see that we're not. I read them. It's like, wait a second. Um, and then finally, on the Rod and Reel. This is where we were last, last month, right? We're still waiting on a response regarding the maintenance responsibilities of the town and their delineation as to what is the town's responsibility and what is the business's responsibility, right? So, we're, no movement there. We haven't heard.
No real movement to Dino of Holly. Have you heard from the Rod and Reel at all?
Not related to that, no.
So, and then once again, my only request. I, I knew that because I remembered it, but if we could put dates on this, that would be great. It would just help us, you know, to know what is in process and what has been done in the current month. That'd be great. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Deputies' Report. We've read Lieutenant Hollinger's report. Do we, do we have any questions for the lieutenant?
Comment.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Lieutenant, I wanted to give you a special shout-out from the Richfield Station Neighborhood Watch. Please thank Deputy Gilmore for everyone over here and the whole town, for sure. Thanks you all, your whole team. We appreciate everything you're doing and please be safe in more ways than one. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman, we'll do that.
Any other questions of the lieutenant? Okay, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we have any, we, we've read the report. If we have any questions on the report, please funnel on to Larry, who will do his best to get you an answer.
Mayor, can we just, for a moment, say an extended thank you for the fire trucks and for Santa Claus that went throughout town. It was awesome. I live on Bayside Road and you could just hear it day after day. I think it is enough.
Pretty cool. I agree. Thank you for that comment. Yeah, pretty cool. Mayor's Report. I want to wish everybody, you know, a happy and safe, you know, Christmas and, and New Year. But the, this year, I'm going to, my mayor's report for, for Christmas is going to focus on the, the Christmas lights display that the council was so kind and wise to, to fund once again. And I'm going to, and I'm going to do this via a video clip. So, Holly, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you.
That was very well done.
That was Greg Morris on the guitar.
Ah, no, very well done. Thank you. You know, I'm a steamroller, I think. I think the economic development, may want to borrow some of those clips permanently for the town's website. Yes.
Hey, Santa Claus is, wake up Santa.
We're going to post that, aren't we, Holly?
Santa Claus is coming. Pay attention.
Holly, will that get posted on the site?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say two things. One, thank you, Holly. Great job. You outdid yourself on this one. And, and wow, do we live in a wonderful place. That, that was really, really awesome. So, that, that is my mayor's report to end my 25th Christmas here. Next, we'll go to, bear with me here. I got all worked up over that Santa Claus thing. All right. Introduce ordinance O-20-11. In ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of, of 2019 to June 30 of 2020 to reconcile expenses and, and income and ratify over expenditures. I set the public hearing for January the 21st at 6:50 PM. Next, introduce ordinance O-20-12. In ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2019 to June 30 of 2020 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. I set the public hearing for January 21st, 6:54 PM. Introduce ordinance O-20-13. In ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2019 to June 30 of 2020 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. At the public hearing for January 21st, it's 6:56 PM. And lastly, introduce an ordinance O-20-14. In ordinance to Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2019 to June 30 of 2020 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. I set the public hearing for January the 21st at 6:58 PM. Bear with me, folks, while I have a swig. Okay, next. Planning and zoning commission. We received a, the, the November report. Chairman Larry is, is on the call. I don't, I don't know if you, does the council have any questions for Chairman Larry?
Comment.
Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
That was Keith, but anyway.
Go ahead. Okay, well, go, go ahead, Charlie. We'll get around to Keith.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to reach, I don't know if reach out is the right word, but I would like to, to make it known, Larry, to you and your folks that, you know, we're really excited about getting a draft of the comprehensive plan. We're anxious to see it. And if there's anything that we can do to help you along with that, whether that's, whether that's something the council can do or something that I could do over coffee, I would be very interested in doing that.
Thank you, Charlie.
I have a comment, too.
Okay, I'll, I'll backtrack to Valerie and then work my way around the horn. Did you say a comment, Valerie?
Yes. Hi, Larry. By the way, thank you so much for providing this. This is a wonderful resource for us to really see what is happening. Even when we listen to planning and zoning, it's on one page and to be able to provide just a few comments is terrific and I wanted to thank you. Also, I'm really encouraged by some of the things that I see coming out of planning and zoning that might be put before us, like the 35 feet, I think it's a wonderful idea. And in that same vein, I'll do this however you like. But based on the, on the ballot question that we had recently for, for the last election, I think P and, uh, planning and zoning should consider making table games illegal in all land uses. Very similar to like, with an all zoning districts for the 35 feet. And I can talk to you about this at any time, the idea. But I think making table games, I'm not talking about what we currently have with the pull tab machines that currently exist, but table games themselves, illegal in all land uses will be the fruition of what came out of the ballot question. And so, it's just something that I would like you and planning and zoning to think about. And if you'd like me to come to a meeting to discuss the idea, I'm more than willing to. And I just really thank you for giving us this report. It's, it's really, really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. And if I could help here, I've already had some discussions with the, the, the town attorney and the, you know, the town administrator. And this is a request that I planned to make of the, of planning and zoning early next year to, you know, address the results of the, the referendum that, that were very important. And I think what we need, you know, you know, going forward is exactly, you know, some sort of an ordinance I would be, would be requesting to, you know, you carry out the mission of the, of, of the people. But, but thank you and we'll, we'll take this up in a work session early next year and, you know, we'll get it done. They're awful busy, but we'll get it done because it's important. Okay, we, Valerie, Charlie, Larry, did you have any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to echo sentiments of Councilmember Fink on, very interested in the status of the comprehensive plan. He might want to consider maybe some kind of a briefing going forward. And then Larry, I don't know if you wanted to provide any summary of the public meeting you had just last week on the amendment to the Rod and Reel development?
Sure. The, we held the meeting two days ago. Reviewed the changes, the revisions that the Rod and Reel had requested. Basically, they, the original site plan for which they have a, a valid building permit at this time included a five-story hotel structure, a new structure that would be concrete and steel while they retain the old Rod and Reel wooden ballroom restaurant structure. And what they had requested was to eliminate that, that, that is the wooden structure as a, a potential safety issue and replace and build it from the ground up as a concrete and steel structure, which actually increased their floor space within the building, but the building retained the same footprint that the, the two structures would have had. So, they gained a little space because the two structures had to be separated by, I think, 10 feet for safety reasons. And by moving to an all-concrete construction, it, it allowed 20,000 more square feet of the building. But the building also reduced from five stories to four stories, which we thought, I thought, improved its appearance and reduced its impact on the waterfront.
So, sorry. It was my understanding that that proposed revision got approved by a vote of four to two. Is that correct?
Oh, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Greg? Alright, thank you. Greg?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Larry, for taking the time to visit these chambers and provide your report. I think it's a very valuable report. I would like to even see a green team report as well, but I also know that, and I want you to know that I know that the chairs of these boards aren't always able to provide the reports in person, particularly when things open up again. I wanted to specifically note that I supported Valerie's comment. The mayor mentioned the mission of the people. I want to, it's worthwhile mentioning that the approval that happened a couple nights ago actually expanded gambling floor space in town. The referendum that we all were part of had two things on there, and the residents resoundedly voted against both of them. So they're resoundingly voting against gambling expansion. I know that we want to set our commissioners up to succeed. I know we've had some discussions about timeliness of those plans and to the people who ultimately have to cast the votes on them. I didn't think it was fair that Chris Jakubiec, I'm going to say, put them in that position. But we want to set them up to succeed. It's a lot of hard work that goes in there, and I know those folks have been working their tails off. They've got some interesting and complex things that they've been dealing with. I want to let the public know that during the meeting a couple nights ago regarding that Rodden Real, there were some great comments and great questions by your planning and zoning commissioners. It always concerns me when people don't ask questions, especially about important matters. And there were just some tremendous questions, I thought, asked as they were sorting through another marathon meeting. And I know it's tough to be the chair, Larry, and I want to thank you for fulfilling that role. And please thank all of the commissioners for all of us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
If I could respond to that, as I understand it, the the number of gaming machines that the Rodden Real has fixed by the state legislature and is not something that can be randomly changed by the Rodden Real. The floor space was increased in the gaming area, but the number of machines wasn't changed, to my knowledge, so.
That's correct. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith, did you have any questions?
I had just have a comment. I wanted to thank Larry and, of course, you, Mayor, and Holly for bringing this report forward. I've been asking about that for a couple meetings now, and I really appreciate it. And I think it has a lot of great information in it, and that helps, I think, the council wrap their head around a little better what's going on with the town and with planning and zoning. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. And Mr. Vice President?
Yes, just a comment. As been stated, you guys have a lot going on in the planning and zoning commission, and each one is very important, not only in their own right, but as a whole. So I wanted to pass along to you and importantly to share with your fellow commissioners that we really do appreciate all the time and energy that each one is providing on behalf of the town. It will slow down at some point, but you've got some busy months ahead of you, and, you know, as been echoed or as I can echo what's been said, you know, we're really eager to see the results of your work in a number of the different projects. So please stay on it, and again, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure I'm speaking for everyone else, too, and we really do appreciate what you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your comment. Look forward to seeing you again. Board of Appeals, no hearing. Economic Development Committee, Larry?
Yeah, there's lots been going on since our last council meeting. I'll try to be very succinct. On December 9, there was a virtual meeting of the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission. We discussed the Maryland Restaurant Relief Grant Program, and that program has awarded throughout the state now over $965,000 to 93 establishments. So they're doing, trying to do everything they can to help our restaurant business stay together. We conducted a virtual walk of various nonprofits across the county, including Arca Southern Maryland, Calvert Hospice, Boys and Girls Club, and Smile Services and Food Pantry, which I had not heard of before, and basically Smile stands for Service Makes Individual Lives Exciting. So they've been doing a lot of work during this pandemic and trying to get food distributed. The committee also discussed the creation, creating an agritourism committee. We'll see where that goes and I'll report in the future. On December 15, the County Board of Commissioners held a public hearing on expansion of broadband services to fill in some of the remaining gaps in service areas across the county. So that looks like that's going to go forward. I don't know that that has much of a direct impact here in town, but it is going to fill in some of the remaining gaps that are out there. Already talked about the planning and zoning meeting on the revised plan for Rodden Real. I'll skip that. Holly's report and Town Administrator's report talked about the Stormwater Solutions Work Group that she and Jay and I are participating in. The last meeting we had just a couple days ago, gosh, actually, I think it was yesterday, we discussed green solutions and low-impact development. So it's very interesting. One last thing, the Twin Beaches Shopping and Holiday Light Displays got a shout-out on our local radio station WKIK, which is 102.9, just inviting everyone to come into town and see the light displays and visit our businesses in the Twin Beaches area. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Morris, to report on the remediation advisory board. Greg?
Yeah. I thought that that was the resident advisory board. But nevertheless, this is something that we've all been, you've heard this in a few of the meetings, folks, over the past year or so. I want to explain something, and there's a couple things for the record that I want to establish here. The RAB is Resident Advisory Board. What that is, is the board, which are local residents who are organized by, organized under the Navy and under a lot of written conditions, I have to say. Advisory, which is what we're going to be doing, the RAB is an intermediary between the Navy cleanup efforts and residents and anybody on the outside interested, I guess, for that matter. And residents, those are anybody that's anywhere remotely close to the research station. They have been undergoing several different variety of cleanup efforts there. We originally met in 2019, had the initial RAB meeting, and the second meeting was just held. We selected a spokesperson, which is important. That particular person lives basically across the street from the Naval Research Center, and I'm looking forward to, we're all looking forward to meeting that individual and having some discussions. It's taken a long time to get to this point. It's worthwhile noting that. It's been 18 months, and I know we're moving forward. I like to also commend Delegate Fisher for prodding this and kind of, I don't know if he actually initiated it all, but he made phone calls to get this thing going. It is, in my opinion, there has been nothing shared by the Navy over the last 18 months that appears serious and is not either cleaned up already or well-contained. So we're looking forward to moving forward with the advisory board, and for all indications, it'll be an easy journey. Looking forward to having more to report in the near future. Thanks, Larry.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness coalition, Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we had our business meeting, December 10, 6 PM. Had a pretty good attendance. We had some report outs by some of our members. I wanted to share some of that with you all. The Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse held a drug take-back day a couple months ago, and about 40 people dropped off prescription medications, about 500 bottles of medications were taken out of circulation. So that was a great turnout for that event. They are also in the process of sending out mailing and resource cards to areas that have high opioid abuse activity, and those three main areas are Lesby, Prince Frederick, and the Beaches zip code areas. There's going to be five-by-seven cards with information about resource, recovery resources that are available here in the county that they're putting out. There will also, apparently, there's been a tendency for people, when they overdose, of not calling 911 right away. So they are encouraging folks to do that if they are in the presence of an overdose, even if you have naloxone, do call 911. You don't know what's going to happen. And there is a Good Samaritan law in place. The Calvert County Health Department, we had Dr. Fuller and Andrea McDonald-Finglin present for the meeting, and Dr. Fuller has reminded us that the Recovery Rapid Response Mobile Crisis Team is in the process of moving from 16 hours per day, seven days a week, to 24/7 service. They expect that to happen in the first quarter of 2021. So that'll be a great thing for folks who are, you know, in crisis to have this resource any time of the day or night. And also their services are expanding to include mental health issues, which, you know, because of COVID, a lot of folks are struggling with mental health issues. So here's another resource that they can call on. And again, just as a reminder, the number for their Recovery Rapid Response Team is 877-467-5628. And thank you, Holly, for putting that card up on the email blast on the website a couple months ago. I know it's been there for a while now, but that's wonderful. We do appreciate that. Also, let's see. Andrea shared some training schedule that'll be coming out here in January, February, and we've shared that with Holly, and she's going to make that available on the on the email blast and on the website, information. Some of it's geared more towards health providers, but some of the courses or seminars are geared more towards, you know, families, that just the regular Joe like you and me, who want to learn more about the issues surrounding this, causes, and recovery help that's out there. So do keep an eye out for that. And let's see, Emmanuel Church, Celebrate Recovery, has group therapy nights every Friday night. They've had quite a bit of activity over there. They have gender-specific small groups counseling, and more and more folks are coming in for issues other than substance abuse, for grief counseling, for marital issues, once again, resulting from, I guess, being cooped up with COVID and not being get out. Just a reminder, they do offer free childcare. If that has been an obstacle in the past for anyone out there, this might be an option for you to get some help. So the big thing that we covered this, at this meeting, was a review of our road sign design, and these are temporary road signs. I've mentioned this before. It just has additional information about the Recovery Rapid Response and the services they provide and the phone numbers. Those aren't really on the sign that we put up in 2017 at North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. We thought it'd be a great thing. These are going to be portable, kind of canvas, outdoor canvas type of signs that we can put in front of the town hall, put one over by the fire department, but we have the option of moving them around town to take advantage of novelty, you know. And once you keep passing something over and over, you kind of ignore it, but if we move it to different locations, hopefully we'll get new eyes on it, and it'll stay in people's short-term memory there. And I think with that, our next meeting is January 14, 6 PM. Look for the announcements. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a two-part report for you tonight. So our group met on Monday of this week. All of our members were there, as well as six new friends from Horizons on the Bay. We've had some contact with them recently on some of the projects that they're very interested in, and they joined us, and we had really lively and good discussions with them, and look forward to partnering with them moving forward. So in the first part of the meeting, I shared the results of our public outreach that was done in November, and I just wanted to share a few of the statistics with everyone here tonight. So within our, you'll recall, we had an online survey, we had boards, and we had some, you know, interactive meetings as well. And through all of those opportunities for public input, we received over 800 votes on our project. So very happy about that. 500 of those came from our electronic survey, our Survey Monkey survey, and then 200 of them came from the boards at Roland's. I found that one particularly interesting, you know, that we had some cardboard boards up with our information on it, and over 200 pieces of of information or votes or other comments came from those boards, from Roland's, just Roland's itself. So that was a very remarkable. If you're ever looking for public comment, let's keep that one in mind. That was really great. So of our 18 projects, the top three, the first one was all of the safe crossings. You'll recall, there were eight, eight different crossings that we identified as opportunities on Route 260 to 61. That was the top vote getter. Other ones were the connection to the railway trail, connect, making a loop centrally. And then the third one was a sidewalk all along Old Bayside Road. So those were our top three vote getters. A lot of other projects got a lot of attention as well, but those were the top three. And then also, separate from the meeting on Monday, Holly and I met with RKNK on Tuesday morning, just to review the project as a whole. And the one thing I want to share about that meeting is we're expecting RKNK to deliver our walkability master plan sometime in mid-January is the expectation right now. So we'll all have the full master plan to review here real soon. So we're all excited about that as well. And then for the second part of the report, I want to pass over to my co-chair, Charlie.
Yeah, thanks, Derek, and I'm not on mute, just checking. Couple things. So that, those were great reports, and I, a special shout-out thanks to Holly for working so closely with with our contractor and with us to get those, get that information up and to get, and get a lot of those statistics out. Appreciate that. So earlier this week, Lori and I met with, well, Lori reached out to a number of county-level officials and found very open ears from a number of folks, and so we have a whole slew of contacts now, and it's led to a couple of different immediate actions. Lori and I met with Yolanda Hipskey. Some of you guys may remember her. She has been at a number of our meetings and was very active in the town prior to, prior to moving a little further out. She helped us author one of the core projects that's in our plan, which is a better pedestrian bike access between town and the Highlands. In any case, she was very forthcoming about grants that are available if we focus in addition to pedestrian, also biking, and so this is something that we're looking at doing in the way that we make some of our proposals. In addition to that, we started a document that all of our committee members are contributing to with grant specifications. So it's essentially a list of grants that are available. with grant specifications. So it's essentially a list of grants that are available. You know, who the funding body is, who can be recipients, rolling grants, et cetera, et cetera. So that we are ready to take steps to get funding for these projects when we when the time comes to actually put shovels in the ground or in advance of that, I guess. And the last thing that I'll say on that, and I think that well, I'll just say that the opportunities there are, they're huge. And there's just a huge number of of resources available if we get creative, and it's critical, and this is why I was asking earlier, that we have our, our projects tied into the comprehensive plan. Almost everything kind of springboards from that, and that's why I was asking about it. That's not pressure to get get the plan done sooner or later. It just means we want to make sure we're working with you to see some of these ideas make their way into the plan, into the comprehensive plan. Because that's the springboard for seeking funding in almost all of these grants. I think that's probably, I've rambled long enough. Derek, you're welcome to correct or augment anything I may have missed.
No, no, that's perfect. And in fact, just to add a little bit on to what Charlie said about the, our plan and the comprehensive plan. I mean, it's been our our expectation all along that our Walkability Master Plan will be part of the comprehensive plan. But the opportunities that we may have available to us may come before the comprehensive plan is finished. And so one thing we will, we'll probably need to consider, and we'll talk about this more as the time gets closer. You know, we want to, we want to review and have this body accept the Walkability Plan, and that will open up some of the doors that Charlie mentioned with with funding and other things. So when the time comes, and depending on the status of the comprehensive plan, we may look for other opportunities or other ways for the town to formally accept our Walkability Plan. So we'll, we'll just keep that you know, in the back of our minds for now, but that'll be something that we'll, we'll have a conversation on, I suspect, early in the year. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Derek. We have no unfinished business or new business. Public comment. This is time for the public to make a comment if they choose. I know Sharon has a comment that we, a written comment that she was going to read in for the record. Sharon, would you like to read that? That comment?
That comment, that citizen is online here if he'd like to speak.
Well, I realize that, but I asked you.
I can read it.
Okay.
It's from Mike Kanaski. And he says, "The Highlands HOA of Chesapeake Beach would like to submit for an update on the status of the public sewer connection project with the county. We also would like to submit a request that if the town is responsible for tap fees into this system, that they consider a reduction in fees similar to the amount charged by the county, especially given the dire need of this project and circumstances."
Great. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? At this time, we'll go to the Council Lightning Round. I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
I decided to turn off my mute. Yes, I, first of all, wanted to congratulate all the winners of the brightest beacon on the bay. Well done. The town has just been wonderful, and you're a big part of that. Thanks again to the fire hall for Santa, those fire trucks going through the neighborhoods. I know the kids really look forward to it. It was wonderful. Thank you for doing that. I'd also like to congratulate Derek on his new position and also this new town council. And I'd like to close by saying Merry Christmas to all. May you be safe, take care, and have a much different 2021.
Okay, and if, if I can interrupt the lightning round, I understand Mr. Allen had his hand up during the the public comment here. I didn't see the hand.
That's correct, yeah. Let me introduce myself. My name's David Allen. Lived in Chesapeake Beach now since 1985. And I guess we're getting involved with this whole sewer thing. I'm going to turn a little bit over to my wife, Susan.
Yes, good evening. My name is Susan Allen, and we live over here on Elizabeth Court in the student subdivision. And this is in reference to a letter that was sent to all the property owners by Holly Wall dating in November 19th of this year. And we are a bit concerned. And I heard the comment just previous about the Highlands. I was wondering if we can get any more information in reference to this because we were basically wondering how many sewer or septic failures are currently happening in order to prompt this, you know, hooking up to actual sewer and water.
Mrs. Allen, I appreciate your comment, and I'm going to have the town administrator contact you tomorrow with the information that you're requesting.
Okay, all righty. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll go back to the, the Council Lightning Round. Charlie, thank.
Yeah, a couple of things, but I'll keep it brief. I have been contacted a number of times, so let's call that number over five, by different citizens asking questions and intrigued about short-term rentals. I directed a number of them to the work, our last work session. Now's not the time, I think, to say anything other than I am looking forward to tackling that issue in the new year. The second thing I wanted to say is I've had several conversations with folks about Callum's Field. Let's say between three and five. It's not a huge number, but they were, they were vociferous. And I think that the playground redo we have is a great project. I'm very excited about that. I'm hoping in the new year that we will be looking at that in addition to quite a few other opportunities now that we have possession of Callum's Field. The last thing is, happy holidays to all. Please, please stay safe. Don't give up the ship now. We are in the vaccine home stretch. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I hope it is the home stretch. Larry?
I wanted to steal the thunder from my colleague Derek and just get on the record, say, for our group here, that this marks the first of 48 meetings coming up. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody for another four years. It's been a good four years, and I look forward to us advancing the goals of the town as we go forward. And then I just wanted to say happy holidays, whether you celebrate Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Christmas, or for those really old people, Festivus. I hope you enjoy the holidays, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Councilman Marsh?
Yeah, everybody. I'm going to start with a little serious tone, and I'm going to bring it home. This being a last council meeting of this year, first council meeting of this new tenure. This afternoon, I took an oath of office, not only to bear allegiance to our state and our country, but also to the execution of the Office of Town Council of Chesapeake Beach. I meant it when I said it, that the sky's the limit for this council in this town. I want everybody to have the best. I want to emphasize that, have the best holiday season. BGNE may also like our community mayor. This may be one of my favorite moments of the year, right here. And I would like, I have to mention that Woodland Court, I want to say that Woodland Court cul-de-sac, where I've lived for about 22 years now, of all the 16 homes in our cluster are all lit with Christmas lights now. And that's for the first time ever. And so many, many homes through our community, their lights, their external decorations. Things are looking up 2021. Let's go.
Thank you, sir. Keith, 2021?
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Hey, I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays and, you know, again, looking forward to a better 2021 than what we've been through. We've all been through a lot. Take care, stay safe, wear your masks, and and enjoy the holidays with your families. All right, bye.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fabry?
Yes, thank you. So first, I want to thank my colleagues again for showing your trust and confidence in me. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to working with all of you again. Larry, you didn't steal my thunder, because I was actually going to put a different spin on it this time. I was going to say this is the first of 48 months that we have together. Forty-eight months, so, and it will go by fast, as we just saw, but
Probably more accurate.
It'll be a lot of fun along the way. Congratulations again to all the brightest beacon winners. Some are still on the call. Great to see you guys stayed on till the end. We, the town looks fabulous everywhere. Everywhere you drive, the town looks fabulous. We set a high bar for next year, but I think we can surpass it. So I'm looking looking forward to it, but really going to enjoy it this year. And as Keith just said, just a safe and Merry Christmas to everyone, and we'll see you very soon next year.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? And the eyes at it. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you. Same to you.